Jeremy, I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with our COVID update. Amber and Jim, you wanna let us know where we are?
Yeah, I checked the numbers just before I got on. There's eighty-nine on positive cases on the board, which looks like it's in plus four. And the seven-day rolling average for Suffolk County is at 3.7%, which is also an increase from last week and the week, yeah, week before.
Yeah, that's a, that's a one, one percent increase from the week prior. So it's, it's definitely starting to trend, trend back up locally, Amber, which reflects the increase in Suffolk County. We had five cases reported to us and, and there were four on that count on, on the, the county website. So maybe one is just a little slow getting up there. But we definitely are seeing an increase and, and that trend line start, it looks like it bottomed out and it's starting to go back up again.
Any, any word from the school, how they're doing?
Yeah, two of those cases were from the school.
Okay, okay. And we haven't, well, I'll see Brian Thursday and the update on the vaccinations for the kids. I'm not sure where that stands. Okay, is Bob with this yet? Okay, Bob was making a phone call. So we'll skip, actually, we'll skip number two, Town Code Article sixteen. Three, cannabis opt-out law. I'd gotten a notice last week, per the newly formed Office of Cannabis Management, if your town has already adopted or adopts a local law before December thirty-first, opting out of retail dispensaries and/or onsite consumption sites, the town must notify the OCM by filling out the Office of Cannabis Management opt-out form available here. So, Dot, I just wanted to make sure that you and Bob are on the same page. So, so we're working on this. We don't want to take a chance on it.
Unfortunately, we're going with this new agenda that she put out afterwards. That's the old one.
This is the new.
That's the new one?
It's the same thing.
This is, this, this is the same, but this just superseded this, I thought. No?
That's, that was my interpretation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because she changed the date on it, the seventeenth, and I just corrected it. She said, no, this was the new one, so.
No, I don't know. This is, I don't know where any of this came from. That's not, that's nothing to do with this. This is a budget meeting. I don't know where you got that.
Yeah, this one is twenty-twenty.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I don't know where that came from.
I don't either.
That's not from me.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay.
So when you pass that Friday?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
No.
Okay, all right.
So, so that's the can, that, that's just the formality. I want to make sure, you know, we didn't miss it. We want to, because this is all so new. They just formed this Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management Department. So Bob got in touch with Dottie this morning and we're on board to send in our copy of our resolution that we formally opted out of that. So that's where we are with that. Go back to Town Code, Article sixteen. Bob, you said you had a couple more revisions before we finalize it?
Yeah, I wanted to flush out some of the departments a little bit better. I noticed that some of them were from the older law and we had made changes that were documented, the changes that we've made. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay, again, so we can finish that for the next work session so we can get it on the next town board meeting.
You know what? It's just where we're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, I know we had a discussion because somebody was making, one of our CAC members was making a wetlands app inspection for an application, and there was an issue. The homeowner had a camera and called the police. And we talked about perhaps we need some kind of a procedure.
I thought we actually had something in place.
Actually, in the.
We just need to.
It's in the application that in order to sign up for, that in order to sign up the application, homeowners have to fill out a thing that, a release to allow town employees and committee members to come onto the, to inspect for the site.
I know we talked about it and know.
And I think what we're gonna do is make sure that each, it already always was. I think what we're gonna do is make sure that the committees know to have their town ID with them in, if they have to notify the homeowner.
Yeah, one of the things I think is, it's, to the extent we can, it, it's always a better, it's always a good idea to give the homeowner a call or a heads up that someone's coming over. Just because nobody likes to have people show up unexpectedly on their property. You know, that's always gonna be a little alarming to some people.
No, obviously, but a lot of times there is a, you know, a phone number.
Yeah, no, but the mechanism, mechanism is in place.
It is there, okay.
There should always be a contact, I mean, there should be a contact number because it's always, it's part of the application.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing we want, the person doing the inspection, because a lot of times they're done kind of spontaneous. You know, it's a nice day, cleared up in the afternoon. So the person said, you know what? Good afternoon and go out and see those two or three properties. If you have the card with you and who you are and what you're representing, if confronted on the property right away, you can open up your wallet, show the guard, say, ma'am, sir, I'm a member of the CAC, I'm a member of this committee, I'm here just to do inspection for the town. This should take about ten or fifteen minutes. Sorry, you know, I tried calling ahead or whatever. But, you know, trying to call ahead and leave a message is not the worst thing in the world either.
At the very least, when they show up, they should knock on the door and announce themselves. Sure. At the very least, when they show up, they should knock on the door and announce themselves that they're there. And not just start walk, you know, check, look, walking, looking around.
Okay. So knocking on the door, having your card with you. And we should check with our, the liaison should probably check with their committee people to make sure that they do have these cards, cards available. Phoning ahead when possible.
I, I'm a stronger believer than one, when possible. I think they should make notification to the homeowner that they're going to the property. And Jim, I understand that there's weather conditions, but people have surveillance systems. They all of a sudden they see somebody walking on the property. They had no idea they were coming. Just because it's a release and a document that they sign off on, I, I believe that we shouldn't make a notification. It could be via email, something so that they, they were duly notified.
Okay.
Because it saves those calls. People see people on their webcams and they're calling us because there's somebody on the property and there's, there's no one home to, to knock on the door and say, hey, I'm here from the town and, and I'm here to do an inspection.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure of the mechanism.
Yeah. There's only a few committees that this, this involves, like the planning board and CAC. Sometimes the W one may say, there's probably four or five committees. I've got at least two or three of those. So I'm going to go over it with the group. We'll talk about it procedurally, but we'll try to, to improve that as, as much as we can.
It can affect town board members as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd say that.
Yes, from past experiences. Okay.
We, we have had an increase over here of people requesting ideas, which we've been accommodating.
Okay, anything else on that one?
No, sir.
All right, good, thanks. Okay. Next one is the Divine Bulkhead. This is a, it's not really for a whole lot of public discussion, but I'll just give you a brief oversight. This is the bulkhead of Larry Divine over by Third Bridge that is in, in total disrepair. And it's beginning to undermine the road a little bit. Mr. Divine had put in an application to remove the bulkhead. I think at the time, we thought, guessing we, we were aware of this situation. I think we thought it was to remove and replace. Anyway, he got it, he got a, he got a permit to remove the bulkhead. And then I think when we realized what was issued, Chris put a stop work order on it because the losing of the bulkhead is going to create the losing of the road. So we need to determine who's responsible for repairing the bulkhead. Brought this highway superintendent very clearly feels that it's a privately owned bulkhead on private property and it's the homeowner's responsibility to repair it. And any damage caused to the road because of the bulkhead will be put on the, the property owner. Mr. Divine feels that is very clearly according to the law on this, that the town of Shelter Island is responsible for this work. So we need to have a meeting with Mr. Divine and, 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 you know, come to a meeting of the minds and, you know, decide what we have to do because it's, Brian's very nervous. There's been some, you know, temporary, you know, rip wrap put in place because it's very close to undermining a couple portions of the road. So we have to do something. Brian, just afraid if we get it, you know, one or two major norristers.
It's a bad change.
We're gonna lose the road.
There's a good two feet of washout behind it. What was the bulkhead?
So I had put this on just to, just, this is just for an introduction to discuss it. And Amber had gotten an email from Mr. Divine that he'd like to get it together with the town and discuss how we move forward. So Amber, I think we'll try to set up a meeting where we can get together and I know Chris, I asked Chris to be on about this. I think Brian's trying to get on. He's at the landfill now. They're doing some work on the shed roof for the recycling center today, but he said he tried to get here. Chris, anything you want to add to it? You're on mute. So Amber, I think.
Yeah, I've got two meetings playing here at the same time. I'm trying to figure this out. Okay, here we go. Can you hear me?
Yep, I got you.
Okay, um, yeah, Reed had issued the order to remedy and then he subsequently, I guess, gave them a permit to remove it. But then a following letter saying that not only do you have to remove it, but that was supposed to be part of an application to reinstall it, so.
So you gave him an order to remedy and then we issued the permit to remove it?
Yeah, I'd have to pull a file to see the actual timing of all of it. And Reed's not here, so I can't ask him.
Right, so, yeah, so I have it also. But so there was no remediation really? It was just the removal?
I got this one. I don't think he's done anything. I don't think he's removed it either.
No, no, no. No, because we put this stop work order on it, so, you know.
Yeah, so I don't think he's done anything.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna follow up on this. I just wanted to, you know, you know, Mr. Divine, reach out to us. We'll, we'll get together and.
Yeah.
It's not a very involved bulkhead in terms of depth, you know, I mean, it's.
No, it's long though.
But it's long. It's about two hundred and seventy, seventy-five feet away.
The ad, the ad for the, the house is for sale and the ad says four hundred and thirty feet of beachfront.
Yeah.
So I don't know how much of that is, you know.
Yeah, I thought it should have about two seventy-five or three hundred, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, the property continues to the south, so the property itself has that much, but only, only a portion of it is bulkhead.
Gotcha.
Yeah, okay. I think this is the way to go, though. I think everybody in the room and discussing it is the way to go.
Okay. Is, okay, Cozy Lane. This is another one that's kind of new to us and something we don't normally do, but it's been an issue for a number of years. This is, again, Chris issued an order of remedy, order to remedy in November of two thousand eighteen to the house at nine Cozy Lane. Chris, you want to give a little history on this one or?
Yeah, um, we were notified by adjacent property owners to the fact that the house has been sort of deteriorating and we, I had initial contact with the homeowner and he was going to contract with one of the local roofing companies to fix the roof. And from then on, you know, it was a, it was a start date, I think in January. By like February, March, I hadn't heard anything. And after that, he wouldn't respond to any sort of contact, either through mail or the phone. We sent him, well, we had a town meeting. We sent him the order that we were going to secure the property. If he didn't do it within thirty days, he did not secure the property. So we did, we fenced it and we posted it as an unsafe structure. And that's where it's sitting as we speak now.
Okay, so we, we had a hearing. Well, we set a hearing last Friday to, for this removal of the unsafe structure. Bob, did you, uh, and first of all, we have to fix the, the address, I think, was wrong.
Seven to nine.
And add the tax map number.
Yeah, okay. And did you, were you able to get in touch with the?
I did, I spoke to her.
Any concerns we need to discuss?
He just wanted a briefing on what was going to happen.
Okay, yeah. Just a, a couple of other things. It's, it's, it's a lot more than, and Chris did a pretty extensive, without going into the house, I wonder, most of Chris's, all of Chris's observations made back three years ago in the summer of, you know, August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, confirmed the major damage done to the roof. Now you see the support beam that runs the, you know, the top of the roof has, has, you know, been compromised and is bowing definitely in. But the interior continues to, the insulation is all exposed in the large living room. There's virtually no insulation when you look out from the outside. It, it's pretty much all water damaged and it looks like, it looks, it appears, it's hard to tell. Because there's, it's pretty dark inside. Looks like there's a lot of, there's mold growing in that house. The front fascia is bowing out. The roof structure is sagging and pushing the wall and the roof joints out of plumb. And this is, you know, all based on his, you know, observations made three years ago. The neighbors have been, you know, very, very patient, you know, with this. It's a shame because it appears that they're, and it just from the property itself, there are a couple of kayaks in the backyard that are, look reasonably good and it looks like there's some decent equipment, you know, lawn mowers and tools and stuff in the garage as you look through a window. But other, other than that, inside the house, the back door, I think, has been ajar for about two, two plus years. It's impossible to close that back door because the, the roof is sagged so much that you can't, you can't pull the back door closed. The one thing I was always concerned about is that the, you know, the taxes, of course, the assessment on the home has continued to drop. So the current market value two years ago had, had been reduced dramatically. Most of it is based on land value. I don't want to throw the numbers out because I don't think that's for the public to know right yet, but the, the land value is about at least seventy-five percent of what the market value is because the house is totally worth nothing. Taxes are being paid. We don't know who are paying the taxes. And I don't know whether we made any kind of an effort in the town to alert the assess, the assessor's office. I did talk to Anne Marie about this well over a year ago, saying I'm surprised that, you know, taxes continue to be paid. Do we know who's paying the taxes? And it's for the only reason we're trying to get to make sure that Mr. Conroy, who's the, the person who owns the house, is he dead or alive? I mean, is he still alive? Is family paying the, the taxes on the house? Are they receiving any of his correspondence? You know, we can continue to send all kinds of registered letters to him, but he may not be receiving them. He may not be alive. I don't know. He's, nobody knows that for sure. So I don't know, Bob, is, is there any efforts that you can think of? We, we threw out the idea a couple of years ago. I, I brought it up to the town board about, and again, it's think, trying to think outside the box is, is to have assessor to assessor, call, call up to their assessor's office to find out or police department to police department to find out if we have an address on him in Maine. Does anybody know if the gentleman is still alive? You know, we, obviously, it's impossible to know that unless we confirm that. And unlike the other houses we've dealt with, this one is operating in the dark. And I would feel so much better if somebody from the family knew just how bad the house was in disrepair, that it's a total wreck, that there's no way you can salvage a bit of that house. That they're notified of such, so that they have the opportunity to come down here, reclaim any of the things. Again, be unsafe to go in that house. I would never think that we would allow somebody to actually enter the premises. You might be able to prop open the garage and get some things out of the garage, the kayaks in the backyard, but the stuff in the house. I think, Chris, I think you and I would both agree that you better up your insurance you were ever going to go walking inside that house. It is a really bad, bad situation. So that's just things that we've got to think about. I don't want to surprise anybody. I would love for, you know, whoever owns the property now, if it's still Mr. Conroy, be able to inform them, you know.
Generally, Jim, if, if someone dies, we'll get notified through the probate system that, for the assessor's office, one that, because they'll need to submit the deed. That being said, there's only so far down the road, the assessors can go to look for someone. As long as the taxes are actually being paid and there's not an indication that it's from an illegal source. We can look a little bit more robe, take a more robust look at trying to find him now that we're going to be looking at him for the purposes that we are with the, for the public hearing. And in fact, we, we do, we are going to need, prior to actually commencing the hearing, proof that he, that he actually did receive notice. If we don't get a returned receipt, then we'll probably end up having to, like I said, adjourn the hearing and have him served by a process server, which will, will know, you know, exactly where he is.
So I just wanted to bring that up to everybody because we, any of the registered mail that we've sent there, we've sent, Chris has sent up, you know, quite a bit of correspondence there. Nothing, to the best of our knowledge, has been received, other than maybe four years ago or three years ago, back in the summer of two thousand eighteen, when there was an order to remediate that they, that the building department here was informed that they were going to take some steps to be able to, to remediate the roof. And that never happened. So.
Yeah, he, he responded in January of two thousand nineteen that he was, you know, intending to re, repair the house. And he had to get email and a cell phone contact so we can try again.
I've, I've tried those numbers throughout, you know, so Beach Association, we've tried to contact him for, you know, I, I've called morning, early afternoon, evening, every, you know, weekends, weekdays. No response. Phone rings, but there's no answering service. There's nothing.
Okay, so Bob, if, if we, again, we're gonna try with, again, with the emails, with the registered letter, with the cell phone number. If nothing happens, how do we, what do we do with a processor?
At that point, we have to hire, basically hire a process server and they will go and locate him and serve the papers on him.
And what if we can't find them?
Well, then we have to do is search for estates, search for, you know, some other person to serve the process. I, I mean, I don't know if you remember, I think you were around for the, what they went through at, on Bridge Street. You know, that took decades.
Right.
Till they actually found somebody that they could.
Right, yeah. They didn't find anybody. The money's still broken.
Yeah, exactly. You eventually have to go to get a court order.
Right. So what I would say is on that, and I've tried to say this to them, when they're paying the taxes, there's a return address there, you know, could we find out? Follow up and see if it's the same address in Maine or somebody different from the family that's actually picking up the, the cost of paying the taxes. Taxes are not very high. So the yearly taxes, they're paid twice a year every six months, and they have been throughout.
All right, so we have two and a half weeks to try to locate them and contact them. Okay.
The address on the tax bill now is in the heights.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
We should probably go.
I expect this forwarded, but the post office is going to give us a forwarding address.
But I think it's time to document all of this stuff. I mean, really start to make the effort for contacts, especially if you ever plan on bringing your house down, you know.
Well, I think that's the whole.
Well, it's been documented back for, for years.
Yeah, you're a hundred percent right. Okay, so to be continued. Okay, next on the list, again, I'd asked Brian to come, but I know there's a lot going on at the landfill today. The contractor license update. Marion has started, we started last month, actually, with the contractor renewals. And we upped the fee this year to two hundred and fifty dollars per year. But we've also included landscapers in the licensing process. And you have to have, again, you have to show proof of liability insurance and proof, proof of workers' comp insurance. And if you're, any pest control applicator, you have to show your license for that also. So that's, that we have implemented. Now we're in the process at the landfill of implementing the actual charge for leaves and making sure the people are licensed. So Brian was gonna, I think today he was putting the sign up, the highway sign, you know, the public, the police sign to notify people that as of, I think tomorrow, we're charging for leaves at the dump. And people have to get their licenses. They go in tomorrow. If they don't have the license, they'll get the forms. And then they have to get the license the next time back. I had registered last week and Kevin Lutmansky and I, Kevin's our IT coordinator, came up with the, just, this is what we're gonna do. It's gonna be a stick. Now, I'll go, I, I got my license. So now when I go to the landfill, they weigh each of my trucks and I'll have a code that they'll put in the computer. And I'll have one for each of my trucks. So when you go on the scale, you know, they're just typing, okay, it's still a truck one. And then, you know, I'll get billed for what, what I do. If you're not licensed, you're gonna get billed for what you do and you're gonna get a seventy-five dollar per day dumping fee charge. Again, there's, people don't, they say, you know, leaves don't cost anything. If you drive, if you drive up to the landfill and look at, or even we charge for the, for the brush now, if you look at what's up there, it's a, it's a, it's a full-time job for, you know, two men just to, just to stay on top of it. Never mind the, the maintenance of the equipment and, and paying off the equipment. So again, this is one of the big things we're dealing with, use of fees, trying to make sure that the people that, you know, use certain parts of the town, you know, pay for it.
I signed a check Friday for a little over eleven thousand dollars for parts for the grinder.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of it.
Yeah.
Not just labor.
And he keeps that grinder in, in some shape, I'll tell you. Yeah. But, so again, it, you know, there'll be a little, you know, hiccups initially. I had seen a, an email from Ron Jernik with a couple of questions about, you know, organizations. So I'll stop up tomorrow and see him about exactly how we're doing it at the, at the scale house when people come in to, to register. So, you know, it'll take a while, but we'll get it in place and, you know, it'll work for everybody. And, and, and the way we're doing it with these stickers, with every, this will give all the contractors, you know, a record of each truck, what they're doing each day and what, how many times they're going in, because they'll bill their customers accordingly.
Hey, Jerry. Yeah. Just a quick, they must have had to sign up because we've already had, I think, four contractors come in and looking for their license and their stickers, so.
But, okay.
To get the message.
Good, thank you, Chris. Okay. All right, that's all I have. We, again, we're gonna go into a special meeting to, for a few things, but before we do that, we'll go around the table. Bob, you have anything? Albert?
A couple of brief. The CPF committee met. The financials, they're, they're booming at this point this year. Up until, up till September thirtieth, the fund has collected three billion, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars through September thirtieth. Setting an old, old time record here. Much, very good news. The West Neck Preserve, they are considering talking to people to obtain some proposals to look at some people that would, with the knowledge and ability to enhance the meadow that was there in the beginning, in, in the center of the property, to increase the meadow and to just look at some native plantings to put in there. I mean, the place was pretty wiped out with locust trees and invasive, so.
It looks great. It looks great, though.
They mowed it, yeah.
Got the new mower in there. They're working on it today.
Spread the wood chips around.
I, I spoke with, I spoke with Brian about the wood chips and apparently the wood chips have decomposed so much that they're not going to do much as wood chips. They're going to be more compost. So we might do some top dressing with them and use them, you know, in alternate means, but we'll use them.
Good. The only other thing I had was that the water advisory committee met. The water levels that we get each month from the USGS in our monitoring wells are good. Our rainfall amount so far is a little over forty inches for this year, which is on target for typical amounts. But as usual, everyone is to continue good conservation. But as usual, um everyone is to uh continue good conservation measures. And they are continuing to work on the ground and surface water management plan. Finalizing, going over it to to make some, come up with more recommendations for the board. Be continued.
Great. Any uh status on Fresh Pond? That, are we done, are we waiting on the study or?
Waiting for the the final report on that.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be weeks, weeks away, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's pending.
That's fine, yeah, okay. Anything else, though? Amber, Amber left. Amber had to go to, I had to a conference she had to attend. Okay, Jim?
Uh beach access was canceled this morning, rescheduled for December seventh, which I believe is a Tuesday, uh probably nine o'clock. Um CAC was, is pending rescheduling, they couldn't get into the building last week when I was sick. At that, right at that time, so we have to reschedule that. Uh Veterans Day, you know, went very well, Donnie was over there with uh, you know, a few dozen people. Uh tenants wasn't necessarily the best for Veterans Day, but I think the people that came, um I think. Pretty good message we get out to the community. And um, I mean, the overall message that we tried to um to get on Veterans Day was to. Two-fold, number one is to honor our Afghan warriors, uh you know, young men and women who have served there. Uh sometimes after war, and I'm very sensitive to it after Vietnam, that you come home and for literally a decade, nobody talked about Vietnam. Um, the way we came out of Afghanistan in the last closing weeks there, left a bad taste in a lot of people's, um, you know, minds and and. It was just something I wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that um. We we had two decades of no more nine elevens and attacks and and there were a lot of very positive things that came out of Afghanistan. And I wanted people to uh still celebrate the fact that um these sacrifices made by these young. Men and women should not go in vain. Uh the second thing, message I tried to get across, you know, and I I think it's an ongoing message I'd like to get across here to, on the island. There's, the nation is um, you know, in turmoil, there's. I I think both sides can agree, I don't care if you're a red, blue state or something, pink in between. Uh this country is in turmoil and there's not a lot of agreement on a lot of things. Um, my thinking on it is you cannot control the thinking of the nation. But we can kind of make an influence right here in our own backyards here on Shelter Island. And uh with that in mind, um I think people need to get away from um the extremes. Uh the super right and super left and work towards the middle and find out that we have a lot more in common that we have that separates us. And that uh United States, whether you want to make it great again or. You can easily self-destruct, you know, I always said in coaching basketball for forty years of my life. Are there times that we lost to a better team? Absolutely. Are there times that we lost to a lesser team? Yes. And are there times that we beat ourselves? The answer is yes, never proud of those games that we beat ourselves. And as a nation, I'm uh very concerned as a veteran. And I think most Americans, especially in my age group, are very concerned about the healing. That needs to take place in this country. So we could start that healing right here on Shelter Island. And get away, get away from the rhetoric and all the, all the nonsense that separates us. So I I hit that hard, pretty hard, that message uh last Thursday. And I think it was very, very well received. I have a lot of people at, on a very positive note, I had a history teacher from Garden City that was there. Vacations out here and owns, they own a hu- house out here, but he does teach history and. At the high school level and he came up to me and said, boy, I'll tell you, that that speech that you gave. I'd love to be able to be able to distribute that to my class tomorrow morning and use that in my lesson plan. And I got it to him right away and uh he since got back to me and said the kids, you know, the kids really got a lot out of that message, so. Um, I worked pretty hard on that message, I do believe in that message, I believe we're better than what we're showing right now. Um, it it's a shame, even on uh, you know, when you look at trying to get bipartisan support for anything. Anything, even infrastructure, that every president has tried to to make happen. It's, it's, it's not Republican or Democrat, it's maintaining. What you own, maintaining the bridges and the tunnels and the roadways and and keeping America productive. And safe. Uh, we can't even agree on infrastructure and it's a, it's a damn shame, but. Again, let's start here and let's do our very, very best to try to bring people to the middle and um. I don't know how you convince the people on the, on the, on the fringes, on the right and the left, that, you know, what they, what they think, you know. America should be going in is the right direction, but for me. Life is a series of compromises and if you're not willing to compromise and and come together as as a community, as a nation. You got nothing. You can't lead the world because you can't even lead your own community, so. Enough, I think enough said, but I, that that was basically the message. Uh, last night, we met as a recreation committee, great meeting, attended by, you know, pretty much everybody, we have five good, strong members now. And of course, Bethany and Emily, uh six and seven, you know, come in as uh people that, you know, represent the uh. What we do in terms of the fit center and what we do in terms of recreation. Um, we we took a look at uh our after-school programs, they went extremely well. You'll, you'll be very happy, Amber and Jerry and 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 everybody here. We've, we've met our revenues and we've surpassed some of our revenues for all our, all our programs. Um, a budget for twenty twenty-two looks excellent, it's a good budget, um we feel that we're confident we will meet those revenues as well. Um, the workout class fees, uh we've taken a look at those. Um, these are the the individual workouts that people attend, you know, usually in the morning. Uh, we haven't changed those fees in years. Um, we are thinking about going to ten dollars from, you know, from five. The good news is that most people go to classes throughout the year, so if you buy the book pass, the ten classes, the fifty-five dollars. Costs you five dollars and fifty cents per class to go and they're good forever, you know, so, you know, if you. You go to four or five classes in the fall and four or five in the winter, you can, you can use that book of passes, you know, and and it, it's working out very, very well. Um, a new piece of equipment, uh the leg press uh for the hoist equipment that we received uh is great. The old piece of equipment, uh the highway department is gonna come by and look at it. Uh Bob, I often said that when we get rid of a piece of old equipment, if somebody wants to pick it up, they need to sign a waiver for, you know, liability. Because obviously, we're giving an old piece of equipment out, not to bid, you know, that old piece of equipment malfunctions, especially when you talk of weight equipment. We want to be dismissed of any liability, so they they know that, you know, so we we discuss that, just so you're aware of that. Um, the twenty twenty-two fees, um. You know, we're looking at uh perhaps a six-month membership and then we dismiss that. Right now, the yearly membership uh currently is two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, we do have other memberships for uh, you know, for for families and things like that. Um. The family membership is three ninety-five, so we were taking that up fifteen dollars to four-ten. We're recommending that the yearly membership go from two fifty-five to two sixty-five. We do have a daily membership of fifteen dollars, but we've never had a monthly membership. So we're kicking around the idea of having a monthly membership for one fifty. Lot of people come out for the month, especially in the summer.
And one fifty a month?
Yeah.
How much is it a year?
Uh, well, that's the idea, the two fifty-five. Uh, we discussed it at Great Lakes, not written in stone yet, but we 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 were looking at. However, if you're a college student, uh college students only pay, you know, a hundred dollars for for the year. A youth membership, you only pay fifty dollars for the year. If you're a member of our EMS or a volunteer, you don't pay the two fifty-five, you pay one seventy-five. Uh, our youth membership covers fourteen to seventeen years of age. Um, and then we got, got something from Emily this morning, um in reference to uh some, some other fees. Yeah, she went home last night after the meeting, uh it was a Zoom meeting, we had it at six o'clock. And she said, over the years, here are some of the other populations that have, I've encountered, looking for more flexible membership options. Seasonal workers, caregivers, mil- people home on military leave. They'll be home for two or three weeks. Children taking care of sick or elderly parents. People who are just use, looking to use the gym for a short period of time, following an injury where they need to go in for three, four weeks. And rehab a a muscle or something in their body. So she would like to propose that that be a special membership for, you know, for a hundred dollars. Um, as opposed to, you know, recommending the uh the steeper fee of one fifty. So these are things that we're still kicking around, uh what the committee is just looking at it, uh we'll make a full report back. Uh, under old bit, um, oh, by the way, the gift toy drive, uh hard.
Jim, before you leave the fit center, excuse me, I'm sorry, what what is the capacity in terms of membership? Is there a?
Yeah, we're back, we we, you know, unless something happens, we get a spike, Dan, you know, we're we're back into, you know. You don't have to make a previous appointment and stuff, you can.
But in terms of the capacity of the fit center.
Yeah.
Comparable to the membership, the total membership, is there?
Yeah.
Balance there or?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, that, it's amazing, if you look at the fit center, Emily, we give you a a pretty good idea. When the heavy use is and when the light use is, but early morning, obviously, a lot of, a lot of people come in early morning. Lot of people come in after work. Uh, the kids have it, of course, the students have it after school, you know, so that there's a like a two-thirty to four o'clock or four-thirty type. Time, timeframe in there, where the students come in and and use it. Um, so that's something that uh.
We have to, to Albert's point, I think, is we have to worry about overselling memberships.
No, no, according, according to Emily, uh, no, that that.
Just capacity.
Yeah, no.
In terms of, you know, how many people are in that at a given time, I know the morning is obviously heavy and.
Yeah.
You said after work.
Yeah. Um, but I think they're gonna come in, uh probably after we settle all of this, we'll come in and give you a complete report now, which, you know, on. Once we have solidified all the different possibilities, we're trying to be a little, I think the bottom line was, we're trying to be a little bit more flexible to the different needs of different. Populations, so we are trying to take a look at that.
Um, just to stay on that one more second, uh again, I'll throw in my pitch for the.
We talked about.
For the senior fees and also, uh, you know, that she's looking at these other groups, I would say if you're home on a military leave, you gotta, you gotta buy. I can't see you charging somebody that's home on a thirty-day pass or one-week pass or anything, having to pay. You know, I just.
I don't disagree with that. I will bring, I will bring, I will bring that up. I will, I will definitely bring that up. Um, we reviewed the mission statement, we have uh, we're trying to kick around a new mission statement for um Shelter Island. Uh Recreation Department, which would encompass both the fit center and our recreational programs. So uh we're still working on that and we have a subgroup that's meeting on that to to refine that with Susan Bender, we're doing a little brainstorming. Uh, we talked about the size for our committee going from seven to five, we would like to officially move down. If we have to make a resolution to move down to five members of the committee. Uh, we talked briefly about the fit center dedication to Garth. Um, got a letter from, and I'll mention her name, Kathy Lynch. Um, gave Kim a a a letter, very nice letter, very pro about Garth's dedication and and I think people that attended. Realized that 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 was, you know, it was really, really nice to see the family there and so many people there. Uh, the one concern that Kathy has is a little bit about the older kids. Um, the special, you know, that. After COVID, uh and this goes back to my mental health group, we're all saying the same thing, I just got a pretty extensive report about. Uh adolescents and younger kids, the amount of uh anxiety, depression. Um, that they have felt in the last year and a half. It's, it's common in elderly and it's very common in younger kids. And uh, you know, with the sports programs, very abbreviated seasons or not having it, being in a small school. Not having a lot to do, um, we're trying to put our heads together a little bit about. Again, remember when the police department said, uh and and chief, I don't know if chief is still on there, when we talked about um. Getting our younger police officers involved with our students a little bit more. So we have five young police officers at least, you know, under the age of uh, you know, thirty-five or thirty-three. That are looking to, uh, you know, as we revamp our, our, you know, our. Our image of police officers and their role in our community. We would love to be able to get them out, more than just a special assembly on drugs or on something like that. Um, having a police officer come down and play ball with the kids on a Friday night or help run a dance or. Help sponsor a trip someplace, a lot of this came from the stuff that Garth used to do with the students and the special trips that we have. And maybe the, maybe some of that has gone away, that we don't take the kids, you know. Again, we have Stony Brook close by, you want to see a division one men, women's lacrosse game or. A basketball game or a football game or a Hoster University or. The Basketball Hall of Fame is right on the other side of the, you get to New London, within fifty-five minutes, you can be in Basketball Hall of Fame. There's so many great little things you can do. I know ski trips are, that that's a tough, that's kind of a tough thing to organize. But there are some things that we could be doing with our youth and um, and even stuff here right on the island and stuff locally. Uh, flag football, we don't have much of an intramural program, you know, so there are some ideas that I have. Being an old phys ed guy and 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 athletic director, if our interscholastic program is so small. Maybe we can beef up a little bit about Friday night flag football, Friday night soccer game, or, you know. And and by the way, I I said to Kim and to the committee, I said, uh, maybe we need to work through somebody like Todd. To find out what the kids would like to see, you know, rather than the seventy-four-year-olds sitting at home saying. Oh, I think I know what the kids would like to see. No, let's, let's go right to the kids. What we're starting to see now is kids hanging out down at Fisk Field and it talked about other things and them just hanging out. And creating a mess and 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 not picking up after themselves and. I talked a little bit about, again, police officers intervening, going down to Fisk Field, uh seam paper laying, guys. Did, did you guys put that, let's all, let's all clean this up together with him, you know, so you bend down, it works. If you do it as an adult, kids do it. If the expectation is there, they'll do it. Uh, you can walk down the hallways in school buildings, say, John, could you, could you get that water paper over there? Sure, Miss Coligan, yeah, and and pick it up and throw it away. How many times will they tell you out of a hundred times not gonna do it? Not my job, they get a custodian, less than five times out of a hundred. And by the way, during those five times, you say, hey, John, you know, you're right, I'm not gonna call the custodian, it's the right thing, I'll do it, don't you worry about it. And I'll go up, put it in the garbage can, walk right, continue more, don't give them a lecture, but just say, hey, it's not beneath me to do it. I ask you, you know, if you don't want to do it, don't do it, but, you know, you have to take pride. If you think of the amount of money that we spent at Fisk Field to make that place desirable. You know, it's a beautiful place, the thousands and thousands of dollars that were donated by private citizens. And not to keep it clean, come on, we're better than that. That's education, that's teaching kids, that's setting the example, so. I, it was a great committee meeting last night, we covered a lot of bases, um and we're, our thing is. Let's not accuse anybody, let's not point fingers, let's all get back into it, I don't care if you're old, young, middle-aged. Uh, you know, when I get finished with this town board a couple of years, I'd like to go back to do what I enjoy doing, working with kids, you know, that that's something that I, you know, get off to. And I think I have a lot to offer for kids and um, and I, and I think there's a lot of people like myself in this town that can. Can can reach out to kids, I, you know, not every kid is getting the same benefit. Of uh, of the things that they need in order to make good decisions as they, as they go through some tough times, this is. These have been challenging times for kids.
Jim, two things to follow up on what you just said, is one, uh, you know, just as you're reaching out to find some programs for the kids. I've reached out to uh both Bethany and Sarah, so let's start uh doing a little more outreach for the seniors.
Yeah.
To do some trips.
Yes.
And to do some things with the bus and uh, so we have, uh, I know last week they went to the Haven's House, which is a start. And tomorrow, Bethany has a luncheon planned with a a group to go to lunch and then we're gonna try to do some bus trips and uh.
Right.
You know, we're gonna try to get, be a little more active and and try to solicit people to, you know, get involved and do things, because there are a lot of people that.
Yep.
You know, would like to be out there. And the other thing, Jim, is to go back to you, you know, basically your status on the country. Is uh today's November sixteen, it's two weeks after Election Day. And uh we're still waiting for the results and a lot of people will throw out their, well, it's, you know, their fault, it's all fault, blah, blah, blah. I think when this, when it's all said and done, Bob and I had this discussion. I think we're gonna get in touch with the County Board of Elections and find. I think we're gonna get in touch with the county board of elections and find out what the screw-up was. Because there's something not right here that none of the candidates were notified that their, that the count was gonna be made yesterday. Uh, the, that the Republican Party, the chairman of the Republican Party wasn't notified. Had the chairman of the Democratic Party found out because she called that morning to find out what was going on. And uh, you know, you know, I've mentioned conspiracy theories in the past that I don't want to get carried away, but we did sue the board of elections two years ago because we didn't get the uh, you know, our own site for the yearly voting. And I hope that's not a reason that this was uh, this screw-up was made, but you know, Bob and I will go forward with this and find out, you know, what the miscommunication was and, and what happened, because it's just, it's just, it's an embarrassment as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
And that's all I have, Bobby, you have anything?
No, thanks.
Okay. EJ, you have anything for us?
No.
Calendar?
Oh. So, yeah, so, so we were talking before you walked into the room. Uh, next Tuesday, Thanksgiving week, is there a definite need for uh, town board meeting or can we take a week off?
When's the uh, when's the next board meeting?
December third.
Yeah, we have Tuesday before that.
As long as we have one before.
We have one.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm fine with that, you.
Oh, that's fine.
I'll chime in for Amber, she's good. Okay. All right. Yeah, yeah.
We didn't schedule one anyway, you know.
Good. All right, anybody else have anything for us? Questions, comments? Julie, Julia?
Not yet, thanks Jerry.
Okay.
Said, thank you, Jerry.
Hey, Chris, did you have something?
No, I didn't.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else.
Don't forget your meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, jeez, okay, oh, so I have to make a motion, we go, have a special meeting?
Yeah, okay.
Uh.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry? Well, Pam has a question, Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, I, I, I just have a question because I'm looking at the new proposed legislation on the definitions and I guess this question is for Bob. Um, just before the public hearing, I'm just curious, all of these sections that are going to be repealed, uh, it, it, it seems like quite a few. And it also seems like some of them are getting rid of environmental definitions, I don't understand what this section four SEQRA change is here that's going on, I mean, have we had a chance to double check?
Yeah, we just, for example, SEQRA, we just, we just moved the definition from that section to the definitions section. It's the same definition.
This, this isn't really a definition of SEQRA, this, what you have here is talking about what a certain action would be.
It's just for the S-E-Q-R-A definite uh, acronym for SEQRA.
I know, but.
It's really very technical, it's just a technical change.
I, I, I'm sorry, maybe, well, maybe we can talk about it, Bob, because it's just, it's very, it's very odd that you're talking about then action will not result in a significant impact and that's not a definition, that's a classification underneath the SEQRA act, so. I, I just, am I to assume that all these sections that say they will be repealed are only going to be repealed with the names next to them, like thirty-six-ish, three parking stickers and places of lodging, that's gonna come out of that section, just those two definitions then?
Right, exactly, just, just the definitions that are listed.
Okay. Okay, I thank you.
And they should be, they could, should be uh, co-extensive, although the names might have changed slightly with the, with the ones that we're adding.
It, it seems like quite a bit of information to sort through, I don't know that I'll be able to do it by December third, but I'll do my best. Everybody have a lovely Thanksgiving, enjoy the family.
Thank you.
Same, same to you, Pam.
Okay, okay, I make a motion, we go into a special meeting, have a second?
Second.
Now?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Jim, you have the first one?
Sure. Be resolved that the town board hereby calls for a public hearing to be held on four fifty-six PM prevailing time on the third day of December twenty twenty-one in the Shelter Island Town Hall, Shelter Island, New York. For all interested persons to be heard in favor of or in opposition to the declaration of Nine Cozy Lane, SCTM number zero seven hundred dash zero twenty-two dash zero one dash zero nine four as a dangerous structure pursuant to section forty-three and forty-five of the Shelter Island Town Code and a determination as to the disposition of the structure. And be it further resolved that the town clerk is directed to notify the owner of the premises by registered return receipt mail at least ten days prior to the hearing, so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved that Marissa Finelli is hereby appointed to service provisional full-time office assistant at twenty-two dollars per hour for thirty-five hours per week, effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, this is for the uh, senior services, so moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the town of Shelter Island has received grant reimbursement funds from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for the Fresh Pond Water Quality Study in the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents. And whereas receipt of these funds was unknown at budget time. Now therefore be resolved that the following twenty twenty-one budget modifications are hereby approved. Twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cent increased to a new A three zero eight nine F state aid Fresh Pond Revenue Account to be funded by said unanticipated revenue and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents increase to the A one four four zero point four nine seven seven Engineering Professional Services Account. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I'm gonna make a motion, we go into executive session to, for a very brief discussion on some litigation and a motion.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.